Um. Are we recording?
Yes, I just turned it on.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lendary Town Council virtual meeting for May 18th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. A call to order of those that are present. I, John Farrell. Mr. Green.
I, Joe Green.
Mr. Dolan.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
Ms. Paul.
Hi, Deb Paul.
Are you all alone in the room by yourselves?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have a, we, I see a flag in the background. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Joe, why don't you lead us off tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
State, Republican.
Which is one nation under God. Indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you. So the first thing I have to do is I have to read this piece for the, the right to know piece. So Town Council, Town Council Chair notification in accordance with the right to know. As the Chair of the Town Council, due to COVID-19 coronavirus crisis in accordance with Governor's News, Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 202004, this Town Council is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, to, to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom webinar platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the council have the ability to communicate and communicate contemporarily during this meeting through platform, and the public has access contemporarily to listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following number. Number is 1-646-558-8656. And when prompted, enter code 88669064041. And then you'll be asked for a password of 650235. You also may watch this meeting on LA's, LA CTV 22, or by going to the Zoom website and entering the same codes provided for the telephone dial-in. Providing public notice of the necessary information for access to the meeting. We have previously gave notice to the public on how to access the meeting via the telephone dial-in information I just provided. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are any problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call 603-432-1100, extension 120, or email kbrown@lendarynh.org. Adjuring the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have you reschedule it at that time. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting will be done by roll call vote. Please start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law, which we have done already. So thank you for that. And we'll move to public comment. We have one item on the agenda for public comment tonight. Happy to entertain other items. The one item we have for tonight is summer events discussions, scheduled discussion. Couple of things that I'm aware of is we've had recent discussions with the concerts on the Common. The town manager communicated with them about possibly a drive-in type of theater arrangement, where we would provide a tent and a stage in front of the gymnasium. We figured they could fit almost 100 cars in the parking lot in front of the gymnasium and be able to have entertainment at that time for that event. So, um, that was presented to them. My understanding is they told us that they're not interested for, they gave us about a half a dozen reasons why they felt it probably wouldn't work for them, and they're going to try to do something virtually. Is that correct, Kevin?
It is correct. Yep, they're gonna do something more scaled down.
So with that and other events, we probably need to be looking at what expenditures were going to be shared with all of those communities, and let's see if we can come up just and see if we can come up with a number of what we will not be distributing because the events are changing. The other major summer event is Old Home Day. We have noticed that a number of the events throughout the entire region are canceling. There's a, I believe on the June 1st meeting, we're going to be presented with some options and be able to make a decision on how we will alter the schedule of Old Home Day. The schedule is likely to be altered based on what we're, information we have today. And we'll come back with more information on that then. Is there anything else I need to add to that, Kevin or Lisa?
No.
I don't think so, no.
By June 1st, we're gonna have to make a decision up or down on Old Home Day, or if we're going to do some sort of upscale down event. And what that will determine that for June 1st. And that's the date of our next meeting. Is there anything else for public comment this evening?
John, do you want me to unmute each of the numbers to see if anyone would like to say anything?
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna unmute the number that ends in 442. Is there anything you'd like to add for public comment? Yeah, it's not. Okay, I'm gonna unmute number ending in 241. Is there anything you'd like to add in public comment?
Yes.
Hi there.
There is. Hi.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, okay. So my name's Ryan Prudhomme. Thank you for taking my call. I live on Litchfield Road in Lendary. So I'm calling in about the ongoing traffic issue in the north part of town, specifically Litchfield and Stonehenge Roads. These two roads are seeing more traffic and trucking than Mammoth Road and other state routes. And I brought this issue up a year ago to the Traffic Committee and attended a meeting, a meeting that Senator Sharon Carson was at because of all the general complaints she was receiving about traffic in town. Now, before the meeting, it was discovered that more than 60,000 cars were going by my house in a 12-day period. 60,000 on a residential road, not a state route. There's a drastic change from the previous year of about 1,000 cars a week. So we're going from 1,000 cars a week to over 5,000 cars a day. And that number has definitely climbed more this past year. And it's all due in part to Pettingill Road and real-time GPS apps such as Waze. And I don't know if you know how, if you know these apps work, but if someone has it on and they discover a faster route, then the algorithm recognizes it and it sends everyone down that way, trucks and all. The apps don't recognize trucking routes or signs. And the only way to combat the apps is with physical barriers. And a quick Google search of "Waze is ruining our quiet streets," we'll shed a little bit of light on that. The other morning at 5:30, there was a wide load coming down my street. Keep in mind, a no-through trucking time. And they came from Stonehenge, a general no-through trucking street. And this happens all the time, and the road is suffering from it. The town just spent a lot of money redoing this road, and it's already cracking and splitting and getting divots in it from all the loads coming through here and the traffic. This isn't fair to the residents of the street, nor is it fair to the taxpayers of this town. Traffic continues down these roads at all hours of the day, people cutting through, commuting, speeding. It never ends. And I'm just asking the town to do something about it. I brought ideas to the Traffic Committee last time, but it seems like it just fell on deaf ears. The idea of signs, signs don't work, and not to mention, the signs aren't enforced anyways. So I feel the only solution is to gate off the top of Harvey Road and separate the industrial area and the residential area of the town, thereby forcing commuters and trucking to the state-funded routes, routes that have the infrastructure to handle it. As of now, Lendary is a great town to cut through, speed through, throw your trash out the window because there's no consequences for it. I can't even hear my kids in my own backyard anymore, and it's really quite sad. And whenever I have people over my house, they can't believe the amount of cars. It's almost worse on the weekends, if you can believe it. I just can't enjoy my own home and my own town anymore, and my hopes that the town will do something about this issue and show the residents they care about them and not the people from other towns and states blowing through our backroads. That's all. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Sir, sir, can I get your address again, please?
33 Litchfield Road.
Is that, um, is that a, a red, I'm trying to remember because I think I went by there recently looking at the road. Is your, is your home red and, is your home red and closer to the road?
My ho, yes, my house is red, yep. And I just spent a lot of money because of the traffic, getting a lot of landscaping done, and I've been trying to put up privacy fencing. And I'm not the only person that's been complaining about it. I know that.
Right, I'm just trying to get an area identified. And Mr., the Youngs are right down the street from you, right? On, on the same side of the road?
Yes, they are, yep.
Okay. No, thank you. I'm trying to just make sure I get the, get the right area. So, so Chief, um, could, could you please look into, please Chief Hart, could you please look into, I'm a little surprised by 1,000 cars to 5,000 cars. Could you please look into that and see if, and have Patrol take a look into this and see what's going on?
So they did that last year. They put, they had a box in front of my house, and they actually counted the cars. And they told me the number at the meeting last year, the Traffic Committee meeting. So that was already established last year when the Senator from our district was there too. Those numbers.
Okay, so, um, so Chief, if we could, um, could we have someone from, we have one of our leadership from Patrol go out and see this man, and let's take a look at what's going on out there and make some observations for us. So at the next meeting, we can, you know, discuss this a little bit further?
Certainly can.
John, if I, John, if I could just follow up to Mr. Prudhomme, if you would just remind me, the box that was put out there counting the cars, was that put out, who, whose traffic counter was it?
The, so the police put it there because when I called over a year ago about it, because I noticed the change of the just line of cars coming through. So they put it out there, and then they told me the numbers, the average speed that was coming through, the highest speed that was coming through. So they gave, when I came to the meeting, the captain is the one who gave me all that data from a year, that was from a, over a year ago too, and it's only gotten worse.
Yeah. And, and by the way, I'm not discounting at all what the numbers that were given to you. I would just wanna look at it again and make sure, because it does seem 1,000 cars a week to 5,000 a day seems, it just, it seems off to me. So I, I wanna, I just wanna relook, and again, there's no doubt that traffic has increased. But I'd wanna look at those numbers again, just to make sure we have an accurate data point.
Absolutely.
Anything further from anyone? So. Sorry about that. Um, so let's, um, if there's another caller, thank you, sir. We'll look into that.
Okay, I'm gonna unmute the number ending with 863. Is there anything you'd like to add to public comment? Okay.
Great. Is there anything further from the council for public comment? Alrighty, seeing none. I'll move on to new business. Discussion of First Responder Stipend Hazard Pay. All yours, Kevin.
Thank you. So I just wanna bring the council up to speed on, this is something that the Governor recently did through the money that was given to the state. Through the CARES Act funding, the state received $1.25 billion. And as part of that, the Governor has a program whereby first responders, namely our police and fire, are going to be receiving stipends in the way of $300 a week for all of them. While the program was announced by the Governor, it was left up to the municipalities to figure out how they're going to administer that. We have not actually seen any of the money yet that's going to pay for the stipends. And so there were a lot of questions to work through. I won't bore you with all the gory details, but in, in some, I can tell you that our plan is to pay out the stipends in one lump sum at the very end of the eight weeks. So roughly the first week of July is when those sums will be, the stipends will be paid out. I'll also let you know that there are administrative, I don't wanna call them administrative. There are other costs to the stipends in that, and includes obviously FICA, payroll tax, Medicare. And then it's also worked into the overtime rate for our first responders as well. So there were costs above just the $300 for each first responder involved here. Those costs are going to be covered by our portion of the CARES Act funding. So this doesn't look to be costing the municipality anything. It's just, there's a lot of administrative details that go into actually paying out these stipends. What I need tonight from the council is just a consensus that you are all fine with us accepting these monies and paying them out. It is not a mandatory program. And it does require the council, a consensus vote of the council though, to accept the monies and pay them out.
So you want that consensus now?
Please.
So if you are in agreement with the, with the order to pay out the $300 stipend, roll call vote. Mr. Green.
I, Joe Green.
Mr. Dolan.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
Ms. Paul.
Hi, Deb Paul.
So that's your consensus.
Thank you.
Are there any questions about the program? Okay, seeing none. Our next item is Justin, Presentation of Prior Year's Management Letter and Recommendations.
Do you mind if we switch over to Resolution 06, as it's somewhat in the same ballpark as what we just talked about?
Sure. Next item is Resolution 20, 202006, a resolution relative to the acceptance of funds under RSA 21-843. I have that resolution in front of me. And the amount of that resolution is from the Governor's Emergency Relief Fund and Recovery Act. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. It's from the Gopher situation that's going on, and it's part of the CARES Act as well.
And I see that this allocation is through August 31st, 2020.
Correct.
Please proceed.
So as Kevin was saying, this was part, or this is part of the CARES Act, which the Governor issued the towns based on certain parameters, a certain amount of money to help offset expenses throughout the additional costs that we have and allows several other allowable expenses. By accepting this, you'll allow us to offset some of the unanticipated expenses, not overtime with public safety related that the town has had to incur, such as the Zoom webinar subscription we need to have and other things of that nature.
Are there any questions from anyone?
John, if I may add to this as well. So tonight, you'll be voting on the resolution to accept the $614,000 as our allocation thus far from the CARES Act. I'm also looking for a consensus, I guess, if you will, from the council to, to, as Justin talked about, there's a number of expenses that fall, things that we can use this money for. There's a lot we cannot use the money for. Thus far, as in terms of covered expenses, we've found about $45,000 worth of expenses. That does not include salary and personnel COVID-related expenses, which will most likely be covered by the FEMA grant, not this grant. But for these monies alone, through, from March through April 30, we've identified about 40, between 40 and 45,000. I would like to portion off, if you will, about $50,000 in a separate fund that would allow small businesses in the community to seek reimbursement for their COVID-related expenses to either open up or to keep open. So for instance, the tents that many are putting out now, the table expenses they've had to incur, Plexiglas partitions, any, any COVID-related expense, setting aside monies for them to submit receipts to us what the expenses were for. And again, the initial allotment would be up to $50,000, not for any one business, but in, in total. And if the coun, if this is something that the council thinks they would like to go forward with, what I would propose doing is coming back to the council in the first meeting in June with a set of parameters for how to apply for this and what would be allowed. And, and having a determination at the June meeting. But before I went that route, I just wanted to see if the council had an appetite for doing that with a portion of this money.
Are there any questions?
This kinda acts like the PPP Act that we're getting as a business. I wanna know what the strings are to this, because it's, it's gonna be, those guys can already get money, those businesses can, are already allowed to get money to cover those costs with their banks. And, and are we gonna ask these businesses to pay us back at 1% like the SBA? Or how is somebody gonna qualify? I'm all for helping the businesses, because I am one. But I don't wanna be redundant and then get stuck or get in some sort of trouble because we didn't follow certain rules, because there are a lot, a lot of strict rules on what businesses can and cannot take, what businesses can and cannot use funds for. So I don't know where we stand with it.
Yeah, so I've had initial discussions with the town attorney on being able to use these funds for those kinds of expenses that the businesses have. And the idea is that this wouldn't be, it would not be a loan or a grant. It would simply be a reimbursement of expenses. And Deb, to your point, they would have to be expenses that are, have not been covered under the PPP. So they couldn't, they couldn't double dip on that. So they would, they would have to be.
So we're gonna ask them for receipt?
Correct. Oh, yeah. There would have to be, that's what I'm saying. There would have to be documentation. We would have to set up the parameters for the program, and that's why, you know, my thought was if, if this is a direction that, you know, that the council feels like they, that we could move in, that I would come back in two weeks with a framework, we can discuss it and hopefully come to an agreement that evening on a, a final framework for it, and then, and then roll it out.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further?
Chairman, I just have a question.
John, this is.
Go ahead, Joe. I'll get Tom next.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to make sure that you were talking about the 50,000 out of the 613. Is that why you brought it up there when we were talking about this particular item?
That's correct, Joe. Yep.
Yes, Tom.
Yeah, is, are there, will, would there be any, do we need a clarification, Kevin, on any expense might have that's COVID-related that might need to share in any of these monies? Or did they have their own financial stream from the, from the state in that regard? Do you know?
I'm sorry. Tom, can you just say that again, because you kinda went out in the beginning of it?
Yeah, what I'm thinking about is the expenses that may be COVID, and do they share in the money that we're getting under the CARES Act? Or do they have their own channel to seek reimbursement for, you know, for the Plexiglas shields or for anything else that they might be doing?
I, yeah, so there's, there's a few revenue streams for small businesses. You know, the PPP is one. There, the Governor just rolled out this Main Street fund, $400 million for small businesses. So what we would do, Tom, is we would look into what do all of these funds cover, right? And, and what expenses are allowable through that? And then tailor hours to meet those areas that still are COVID-related, because they have to be, but maybe weren't covered by either of these two funds. Or, or it could be too that, you know, there's only so much money that's to go around. So they may have applied for a certain amount and only received 50%. And so perhaps we're coming in on the back end, trying to help make up that gap for them.
Well, good. I just, we're hoping we can continue to proceed along the way. I know that our chairman has, has been working with the school's chairman. And we have a, an improved working relationship, and I'm just, I just wanna, wanted to make sure with it, along the spirit of that, that if they had needs that, that for, for COVID issues, that perhaps we could help a little bit.
Well, they, the schools have their own fund. Like, you know, every group has their own fund. And so the schools are no different in that there are both state and federal monies that the schools can apply for, for COVID relief.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, great. Anything, go ahead, I'm sorry, anything further on Resolution 202006?
Yes, I just wanna make sure everyone's aware, this is not the state giving us a check for 613,969,000. We have to show the reimbursement of what we paid. It's a reimbursement basis. So if we don't spend that amount by August 31st, it disappears from us. It goes back to the state or stays with the state. Just so everyone's aware.
Thank you.
Can I like make a motion?
I accept a motion, please.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept Resolution 2020-06.
I'll say a second, please. Thank you for the second. Roll call vote. Joe Green. Tom Dolan, unmute yourself.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
Deb Paul.
I, Deb Paul.
And I, John Farrell. Motion passes 4-0. Okay, now back to number two. Presentation of Prior Year Management Letter and Recommendations. So that would be you, Justin.
Yes, as you guys are aware, last week you were, two weeks ago you tasked me with this. I sent you guys out a letter, and it's part of the agenda as well for the public. If you'd like to read just the general overview. So I'll start with Fiscal Year '19's Management Letter. The prior year comments was Prepare for GASB-84, which is to prepare for fiduciary funds going on our financial statements. We've read the Implementation Guide that was released in June of 2019, which the fiscal year, as you know, ends in June of 2019. And we've done what's needed to, or work with our auditors to prepare for that. It has since, because of COVID and several other reasons, been delayed 12 months. So that will most likely be coming in the future, and it's more of an FYI for us to make sure that we're aware of the upcoming GASB updates. Do you want me to go through all of them or take questions as they occur? Because I see someone has their hand up.
Yeah, this is Tom Dolan. I got my hand up.
Yep.
Yeah, I just, just, I know we, we understand, but for the public's benefit that may be watching, could you explain the acronym GASB?
Yeah, I just, just uh, I know we we understand, but uh for the public's benefit that may be watching, could you explain the acronym GASB?
Uh, yes, it's the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. G A S B.
So, Justin, why don't we take them as we go, just uh review each point and if there's questions, we'll take questions as we go.
Absolutely. The second one for two thousand and nineteen was to monitor the results in revised fund balance policy. Which, I mean, this worldwide pandemic has kind of shown a reason why we need to have a strong fund balance policy. As well as the state budget being delayed as it was earlier in this year. But um as for actually revising the policy, that is in the hands of the council, not in the finance department.
Right, and we have not revised the uh the policy based on some um other points that we've been making each year with them, so I'm aware of that one.
Yep.
And we'll review that one again when they come again this year and maybe we'll handle it a little bit differently going forward based on what's happened.
Okay.
Can I have a question for that?
Yep.
So uh I know you just made the point of the fact that it's up to us, but if there was one that you would recommend. Uh and that you thought very strongly about, would you then uh bring it to the attention of the council?
I I would, yes. And this is one that I've been planning on, but things have been gone.
Okay.
What's our current balance right now?
It is roughly, I believe, six million, sixty-seven.
So we have six million dollars. Which is probably one of the largest fund balances we've had in many years, right?
Uh, no, the past couple of years, it's been higher. We've been spending it on warrant articles.
But if I recall, about ten years ago, we went all the way down to about two million.
Yes, yes.
So we've come all the way back from two million, was our high about eight or nine million and now we're down around six million?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
I recall also that that was per recommendation of uh some of the audits that we had, that sometimes we kind of dipped a little too far. And they wanted us for our rating to kind of stay above a certain number.
Right, and this is essentially what it is, our policy, we are currently above where our policy is. Uh what our policy states we should be, but it's, it's more friendly for us. And it allows us to have the cash flow to deal with situations of this nature that we're currently in. And not require us to take out, or hopefully not require us to take out payments or tax anticipation notices.
Yeah, which we want to avoid.
Exactly. We don't want to pay interest on taxes we're going to be getting. Yes.
Deb, I see you rea- I I see Deb raising her hand.
Yeah, I don't know where the fake one is. Um, I have a question and I know this is going to be really basic, um probably boy to death. But what exactly is a fund balance? Where does it come from? And where, where, what does it include? Like, where has all that money come from i- i- over the years? Is it, is it coming out of excess in budgets, money we didn't spend, money that came in that we didn't expect? Like, if, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm accounting one-on-one.
Yep, it's, it's all the above of what you just said. It is under expended budgets, it is revenue above what we expected. It is revenue we didn't anticipate.
So, so to help the clarification, would it be fair to say that during the last decade? A a number of times, money was taken from fund balance to reduce the tax rate or to keep the tax rate even. During the late two thousands going into two thousand and ten. That's how we got all the way down to two million.
I, if I'm being honest, I cannot speak to that. I was not around during that timeframe.
I think that was some of what was going on. So then at that point, we were basically told, you need to start putting more money aside. So as, as we had larger revenues, we would put that, the revenue money aside, at the same time, not necessarily. Um spending our budget every year. So that's how we increased it over the last ten years.
Correct.
Yes, so, so John, I I can speak from, at least from when I started in two thousand and thirteen. Uh that first budget year, uh we were told we could not use any use of fund balance. When we were putting together our budget because we had fallen below the level that the auditors recommended we have. And so we spent the next few years building that uh fund balance uh back up to an acceptable level. And uh at least I would say the last, I'm going to guess, three or four years. The majority of funding we've put into it has come from the revenue side. In that we've received more revenues than what we budgeted for, uh then has come from the actual expenditure side. Uh so, you know, and not, a- and so part of the fund balance is tax money. Uh that has been raised, that wasn't spent uh through um, you know, the operating budget. But but not all of it is is raised property tax money. Uh for instance, if we have rental car uh revenue that comes in half a million dollars more than what we budgeted. That goes into the fund balance. So uh while, whilst it's a mixture of both unanticipated or or over. Uh revenues and what we budgeted for and unspent uh tax dollars.
The other thing we've had that wasn't mentioned too is we've had some uh monies from insurance is that uh. They've had, we've had refunds in the past, right, uh from insurance companies um where the rate hadn't gone where it needed. Where we thought it was going to go and neither did uh, uh did the insurance company think it was going to go. So that's another source.
Yeah, and and I would just add that. We've, we have always, again, at least in my time. We've always kept the level of the fund balance almost at the minimum reserves. As what is required by the auditors, uh much to the auditor's chagrin. Um but I think we've been careful not to keep in a, an excess amount of money in there. Um while only keeping the minimum reserves to both satisfy the auditors. But not have a a huge uh account of of surplus monies um uh sitting aside. Uh so, you know, we've, we've tried to to balance that out over the years to satisfy both of them. The reason the auditors put this in here is because we changed our fund balance policy. When the school district was able to start keeping their own fund balance, albeit significantly less than what the town is allowed. Uh but when they were allowed to do that, I think it's two percent. Um, that is when we changed our fund balance policy to essentially take the school's budget. Out of the equation uh for how much needs to be in there.
Hey, yes, Deb.
Um, so what is that exact dollar amount that the audit company likes to see it at? And would these fund balances be, would we be able to use that to help maybe cover shortages? That we may be getting this year because of the covid?
Uh, I'll let Justin speak to the first part of that question. Um, to answer the second part, the answer is, the answer is yes, we can. And that is part of, you know, as we get closer into the next fiscal year. Um, that is something that, you know, I'll be discussing with the council is uh using a a mix. Of both fund balance and um cutting appropriations to meet our rev- what we think is going to be. A revenue shortfall. Yeah, I think a good example would be is a couple of years ago, we returned five hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance to the taxpayers. And then we returned another four or five hundred, I think it was six hundred thousand. So we returned one point one million in a period of of one year. And that's because we did have the excess money, so we returned it to the taxpayers.
So the balance.
What was the question, Deb?
What is that magic number that the auditors want to see it at?
So they don't really have a magic number. The reason this is in here is as Kevin said, we switched our policy to remove the school district appropriations. From the calculation. However, our practice has been to include that still as a reserve. Because come the first of the month, we still have to pay the school district whether or not the money is there. So we've been keeping in that practice to keep it in that way. What the auditors are looking for is typically the GFOA recommends three months of expenditures. And there's these different varies of boards and opinions of what the balance should be.
Yeah, there's, Deb, there's essentially two um rec- recommended uh entities. That municipalities will look to to determine how much to keep in. There's GFOA, as Justin mentioned, and there's DRA, Department of Revenue. Uh and then there's our own policy. Our own policy requires the the lowest amount of those three. Uh if we were going by uh GFOA, which is the Generally Accepted uh Finance Standards. Uh it would be a lot higher uh than what it currently is. Same with uh Department of Revenue as well.
And GFOA is Governmental Financial Officers Association.
Okay, because I I remember at one point people talking about this and they would say, when we had like eight million in there and they said, oh, we we want to bring it down. Want to keep a minimum. I think it was at the town deliberative, they, there was a number of like two million dollars was the, the basic. Amount to keep in that um uh in that fund. So that's why I thought that there was an exact kind of number. You don't want it to go below two million. Because that's the the nut that needed to be covered.
So it's, it's based on either, it's based on either three months of average expenditures. Or the percentage of your annual budget, whether it's gross, where it includes county and school district. Includes just school district or just includes a municipality.
Yeah, there, Deb, there is an actual formula that we do use. It's in our uh fund balance policy. Um, you know, it's part of the financial policies. And and so that's what we go by, we go by that formula. And as I mentioned, it used to account for the school districts' total appropriations. Uh but it, our own policy does no longer accounts for that. Right, so I think in recent years, we haven't dropped below five or six million because I think it's where the council's comfortable, right? Okay. All right, um, next item.
So in the current year for fiscal year twenty nineteen is the first one, which is ensure compliance with Uniform Guidance. Which is just to ensure that when we're applying for grants, we're doing so properly and we are uh in compliance with OMB Circular One A one thirty-three. Which is essentially the single audit form. So we have, um, we're working towards that and ensuring that we are in compliance with the Uniform Guidance.
Okay.
Uh, the next one was improve year-end cutoff procedures. And um this was because the capital projects during the audit when they came. We put the invoices in the GL, the date that they actually were paid, rather than pushing them back to fiscal year nineteen. This since has been rectified and it will not occur again. Um, our general fund and sewer fund always operated that way, but because the capital projects were from bonding and not taxation. We, I processed it that way and the auditor said, no, don't do that.
Okay.
Um, the next one was improve classification when bills are issued. And this is in reference to our um motor vehicles mostly with the uh rental car agencies. So when the rent car agencies come, they give us a hundred, two hundred registrations at once. And we process them at that point as cash instead of a receivable. And the reason we do this is our current system doesn't have the ability to process the taxes and other fees that are associated with it. As a receivable and not as cash. We're currently working with our system to try and um rectify this issue. And prevent it from happening again.
Uh, so that's our ERP that we're having the issue with, right?
ERP as well as uh the tax or uh town clerk software.
So, but we don't have the problem with DMV?
It's mostly the tax software issue because when we record the registration. It has to go to uh the state, the state's portion has to go right then and there. And that software is having an issue breaking out the cash to the receivable.
Okay.
So now in fiscal year eighteen, you'll see again, it's GASB eighty-four and eighty-seven. This one is leases for eighty-seven. The first one, eighty-four, is fiduciary funds. Again, we've worked with our auditors to make sure GASB eighty-seven, unlike eighty-four, has been delayed eighteen months because of everything that's going on. The next one is consider expanding the chart of accounts and this one was done while the auditors were actually here. What happened is our capital reserves were in one fund with the school districts. So they would constantly have to back out the school districts. So while they were here, we created a separate fund for the school districts and have them separately now.
Okay. Yes, Deb, hold on. Yes, Deb.
I'm sorry. Um, what is, um, what is a chart account? What are they?
That's our general ledger.
Expanding of chart.
Chart of accounts, that's our general ledger essentially.
So a chart of accounts is the first thing you build when you're implementing the system and lays out all of your, all of your account numbers and all of your allocations.
Okay, thank you.
Like our general fund is one hundred, um, the sewer enterprise fund is two hundred. And that's how we kind of break it out to separate them to ensure that we have a separation.
The last thing is, is what is the, the capital project fund? What is that? Is that the CIP thing?
So, do you mean the capital reserve?
It said a capital project fund. Where did I see it? I just didn't know what it meant.
So we have.
Yeah, I think it's the capital reserve funds, Justin, is what Deb might be referring to. Where it says the capital reserve funds are segregated between the town and school districts.
I'm looking for it right now.
Okay, yep.
Sorry, I should have had it.
So were you talking about um backup on number four in twenty nineteen, the improved year-end cutoffs?
Yes.
So that would be the um central fire station and exit foray, things of those natures.
So like, like some of the CIP stuff is what you're saying?
That had been passed already, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Um, because those, as I stated, because those weren't done by taxation, they were done by bonds or other means. We processed the invoices when they were actually sent out, rather than booking it back to fiscal year nineteen.
Okay.
So that's resolved and will not happen again.
Okay, Justin, anything further?
Uh, yes, number three is maintain ongoing tax liability, appeal, tax appeal liability. And they wanted us to just ensure that we were on the same page with assessing when it comes to the appeals that we have coming into the town. So we're aware, should we need to make any adjustments going forward for them?
Okay. Anything further?
Nope, the last one is the uh same as the fiscal year nineteen regarding the fund balance.
Understood. Are there any further questions with regards to this, this past year's audit letter?
No, nothing.
Alrighty. Okay, well, thank you, Justin. Um.
Yeah, thank you.
Before I move on to approval of minutes, I want to do a couple of recognitions. One is, is that I have um from the Kent Allen Forest, um Ms. Mary Fay, one hundred Pillsbury Road. Uh, we'd like to thank you for, in recognition of uh over fifty hours of spring cleanup. We'd also like to thank uh Trimmers and Eric Skinner at Three Aviation Drive in Lendondary for forty-eight hours of uh spring cleanup. And let's see, um. It appears it must have been, it appears we have a couple of, if I'm reading this correctly, appears we have a couple of birthdays. One, it looks like it's, well, no, I understand what it says here. It's Kirby's birthday. As I'm reading this email. So we want to wish a happy birthday to Kirby.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
We'll, we'll, we'll sing next time. And the other thing I wanted to cover off quickly was, is before I move on to moving through approval of minutes and pieces is. Is um, I want to go through the, the police and the fire chief, but we'll start with the fire chief. And Darren, if I'm understanding, from what I'm seeing, things look like we have a, will have a reasonably good chance of having a June first. Live council meeting if we recognize the right distancing and everything within the room.
I would agree. Uh, it looks.
I would agree. It looks like the, the governor's guidelines that he's just let out again today and leaning that in that direction. Today was the first day that we saw that some of the restaurants and local businesses are starting to open. So we were out most of the afternoon going and speaking with them. There's some that, you know, need a little bit of work going forward, some of doing the right things and hopefully we'll continue to do those. But we'll be out pretty much most of the week now, just kind of going through these places to make sure that the meeting, the guidelines that the town has put in place and just doing it safely.
Anything further there, Chief?
No, I just wanted to say that Londonderry's numbers are continuing to drop, so I'm glad to see that. I also wanted to recognize and let you folks know that this is National EMS Recognition Week. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank, thank all of our first responders for, you know, the dedication, the professionalism and their showing up to work every day and doing what they're doing. So thank you very much for all, to all of them.
Thank you, Darren. Chief Hart, anything from the police department?
Just a couple of things. Last Monday, we began more intense traffic enforcement, given that with the governor's ideas of sort of stay-at-home 2.0. We've been keeping an eye on places like the Laffa Field, which I know has been an area of concern among other places. Everybody's healthy and well as of today. And lastly, I wanted to welcome Chris Legrow. The name may be familiar. Chris has been an explorer with us for probably about seven years. He rose to the top of that group and started today as a dispatcher and we're excited to have him, so.
Fantastic. Congratulations to Chris. All right, so guess Deb.
I have a question for, I guess, you guys. I was watching the town, the school board meeting. And the school board was talking about lending us or giving us a million to 2 million to cover our shortages on caches, on cash flow. It was the May 5th school board. I just wanted to know what you guys were thinking about that or if anybody heard about it or saw it or whatever.
Yeah, we've had discussions with the finance office for the district. It really comes down to a cash flow issue. The school district is essentially offering to delay payments to them if we find ourselves in a cash flow crunch at some point. Based on the current budget numbers for this fiscal year, I don't think it's going to be an issue. Where we'll really find out what kind of financial shape we're in is when we start the new fiscal year, July 1, and tax bills are due. And we see how many payments are not being made and whether or not we have a cash flow issue. Then the school again has offered to defer payments to them if we have cash flow problems.
Oh, I I thought that was a nice gesture, so. I just wanted to see where that stood. Thank you.
Yep. Alrighty, so I'm going to move to approval of minutes for May 4, 2020. Entertained a motion to approve as presented.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Second, this is Tom.
A motion and a second, roll call vote, Joe Green.
Hi, Joe Green.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
Deb Paul. And John Farrell, the chairman. So that's 4-0 on approval of minutes. I have a resignation of Tony Di Francisco from the, from the planning board. Want to thank Tony for his service, very much appreciate everything he's done for the town over these many, many years. Sad to see him go, but I guess there's other responsibilities are taking away his time. I'll accept a motion to accept Tony's resignation.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe Green.
Hi, Joe Green.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
Hi.
Thank you. And the chair votes affirmative. Asking for an appointment of a town council member to the CIP. I'm the current liaison. So if you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to consider Mr. John Farrell to head that up again. We need a second.
That's a second from Tom.
Okay, all those in favor, roll call vote, Joe Green.
Hi, Joe Green.
Hi, Tom Dolan.
Ms. Paul.
I'd like to have discussion. So, I mean, how many years have you been doing it, John? It would be nice to have fresh odds.
Well, I've been doing it for 15 years. And if you did watch the last school board meeting and there's really not going to be any projects submitted this year, according to the schools. So I think it's pretty much a pass. I think it's pretty much a pass through for this year. And I don't have any objectives to continue doing it for another year.
I, I just, like I said, it would be nice to see new people on new boards. And if it's going to be an easy year, we don't need somebody with experience. Somebody else like Joe or somebody could actually do this position. But I said my piece.
Okay, so I guess you're voting against.
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes 2-1. We'll move on to liaison reports. Do I have any liaison reports from, from the council?
John, I don't have a report, but I wanted to comment on the Bellevance Beverage Construction up of the Pettingill Road. I don't know, Kevin, if, if you could maybe give us an update. It's right in front of the FedEx building. It looks like it's proceeding well and that's, that's going to be good for our tax base when it gets completed. Do you have any? Can we get an update, John, from the town manager as to where that construction stands and and the schedule?
That's Bellevance Beverage. That's going to be a distribution center for them, their main distribution center and also serve as headquarters for their offices there. It's two construction seasons. So they'll probably be opened sometime next summer. So, but they are, you know, advancing fairly well here. And I agree, it's, it'll be great to have that as additional tax base in the industrial area of town. It's great to see.
Anything further? Nothing further for liaison reports? Town manager report.
Thank you. A few updates this evening. Just one, just a budget update. We continue to be in fairly good shape right now. And we should be on the expenditure side. We should be about 87.43% expended. And right now, we're, we're at about 83.58. So we're almost 2% behind right now on the expenditure side, mostly due in part to the budget freeze that we put in place back in March. Thus far, it's, it's yielding the results that we hoped it would. On the revenue side, things continue to still, knock on wood, be fairly positive. Again, we should be at 87.43% and adjusted, we're at about 88.78. Building permits are coming in very strong right now because of all of the home projects that people are doing in and around town. All you have to do is drive by Home Depot every morning in the line 60 deep to get in. But a lot, a lot of home projects is yielding a lot of returns in building permits. And motor vehicle registration continues to be fairly healthy. It's running at about 91% right now. So hopefully, fingers crossed, especially as, as things start to open up, this trend continues and that we finish fiscal year 20 in a, in a fairly strong position. Not something I thought I'd be saying a month ago. Speaking of opening up, we're in the works right now of getting ready to reopen town hall. Our target date is June 15 for a full reopening of town hall. As I've said all along, we, we continue to be operational, utilizing mostly online services, but also meeting people by appointment when we can. Speaking of appointments, the cable studio will be taking appointments starting next Tuesday. So if people are looking to tape shows at the cable studio, they'll be able to call, make an appointment and utilize a cable studio starting next Tuesday. Probably the last area of, of town, if you will, the last building to open will be the senior center. That unfortunately probably will not be opening on, on June 15 when town hall reopens. Obviously, that's a vulnerable population and we want to make sure that everybody is as safe as possible prior to opening the senior center back up. The other reason that we're looking, targeting June 15 is one, that'll have been pretty much a full month after we've reopened a lot of places here in New Hampshire. So we'll have a good idea of how things are trending at that point. And it's also the end of the remote learning for, for school-aged children. And hopefully, at that point, most childcare and daycare centers will be back in operation. So for anyone that has young kids at home, it'll be much more accommodating at that time as well. The last piece I wanted to bring up is I'm looking for some guidance from the council on one particular project. As you know, the addition to town hall was passed and the monies have already been appropriated for it. But I put that project on hold back in March when everything went into lockdown. I'm looking for guidance on whether we should continue to hold on that project or if we should resume getting it done again. These monies cannot be used for any other purpose because they were voted on specifically for the town hall addition project. If we wait and don't do anything, costs could go up and we could miss that window. On the other hand, if we wait and don't do anything, eventually that money would lapse back into the general fund. But it likely would not be, I don't know, Justin, what's, what's the soonest that money would lapse back into the general fund?
I'm not 100% sure how it's worded and that would determine when it would be.
Yeah.
So I'll have to get back to you on that.
Well, why don't we put that down for an agenda item for the June 1st meeting and maybe we can do a little research on that between now and then.
Jim, can I have a comment?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So I think, you know, one of the things that it should definitely depend on is obviously, I know we can, construction can happen now, but can we do it safely and possibly with some direction from the chief, Chief O'Brien? And, you know, obviously make sure that everything, all the protocols are being followed and can be followed in that type of environment.
Yeah, so what they're doing now at the fire station, Joe, is they're all screened, all their workers that are showing up every day now are screened prior to coming in. So their temperatures are taken, they're required to wear masks and everything like that versus three weeks ago, they were not. So that's a new guideline. It's also from the state that's come down to the local construction sites. So we will make sure that everybody's following the proper precautions if, if you choose to go this way.
Thank you.
Okay, one of the questions, the library hasn't given us any update on their position on reopening, right?
I don't have anything yet. Lisa, have.
Nothing official, but what they are contemplating is not a reopen to the public as of June 1, but making curbside pickup available as of June 1, I believe.
Okay.
Question from, question from Tom.
Yes, Tom.
Lisa, do you know if they've gone the steps that we have in town hall with the Plexiglas and the sneeze guards and all that stuff?
They have, yeah. Steve Cotton installed them over there as well and they look beautiful. He did some staining, some special staining for them, so they look great.
Mr. Chairman.
Good. Yes, sir.
Yes, I also wanted to let you know that we have a upcoming meeting that we're going to be in person with. And obviously with the six feet between everybody and making sure that we have to wear masks, et cetera. So that's coming up next meeting.
So if, so Chief, correct me if I'm, you know, where I go wrong here. I think what we previously discussed was is that we would take chairs out of the room. The counselors would separate across the top. As long as we're six feet apart, we don't necessarily have to wear masks, right?
That is correct. Masks are still a recommendation for when you're going out into the public, but it's not a requirement as of this time.
So we just have to make sure that we've set up the room so that everyone's six feet apart.
Correct.
And although, although, once you come into town hall to do business, we're requiring that you wear a mask.
Absolutely.
Okay.
A question for Chief O'Brien.
Yes.
Chief, do you have a, a date for a grand opening?
Well, it's looking like it's going to be somewhere around the second week of June. Unfortunately, it could be a virtual grand opening. You never know. Because I'm not inviting a lot of people in right off the bat. Yeah, they're moving on finishes right now. Flooring is going in, appliances are going in. So it's, it's starting to wind up, thank God.
Great.
Alrighty, a couple of quick things, housekeeping. Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa, assistant town manager report, and then I'll do housekeeping.
Nothing additional to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of housekeeping items. Next meeting is June 1. Following meeting after that is June 15. From that point, we go into summer schedule. Proposed summer schedule would be July 20 for the July meeting. And these are all subject to change depending on what's going on. August 17, right after the old home day week for the August meeting. And then what I would propose for going into September and going into budget sea, come getting ready for budget season is August 31, since Labor Day falls late this year. And then the 14th of September and the 28th of September. So if we can have those dates on our agenda, ready to review for the next meeting.
John, and that, on that September schedule, so you're going to want a meeting on the 28th and then the 5th of October?
Pull the calendar back up. I'm trying to, with, with Labor Day falling late, it kind of messes us up.
Right.
So it would be. Well, I think if we have one on the 28th, I think we're going to be ready for the 5th of October because we're going to be going right into budgets, right? Or I can do the 12th and the 25th. But the 12th is a holiday, isn't it?
12th is Columbus Day, yeah.
All right, well, let's, let's bring those up and look at those at the next meeting as well. And let's look at what the, what the budget calendar might look like and then we'll adjust the meetings according to the budget calendar.
Sounds good.
Because we'll be getting ready for, we'll be starting to get ready for budgets. Okay. I don't have anything further this evening on the agenda. Is anything further from the council? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Roll call vote, Joe Green.
Hi, Joe Green.
Hi, Tom Dolan. Hi.
Deb Paul.
Hi, Deb Paul.
And John Farrell. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're adjourned. We'll see you on June 1 and hopefully all goes well and we'll be live. Good night.
Bye bye.
Good night.